At this time, I'd like to cause Village of Midlothian Board Meeting to order. We'll talk.
Trusty Gillis?
Here.
Trusty Christ?
Here.
Trusty LaRue?
Here.
Trusty Mascol?
Here.
Trusty Shavoni?
Here.
And then ready.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and after the pledge, please stay standing for a moment of silence for our bench. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody with any of the municipal commissions or local organizations in attendance, if you'd like to stand up and introduce yourself, we'd like to recognize you and welcome you to the board meeting. Carl Allen, presentation.
Oh, Delia, are you in line?
I'm in the committee with all the BFW.
Jean-Bert Technic, Community Policing.
Lori Taylor, Historical, and Chamber of Commerce, and the BFW Auxiliary.
Welcome to everybody this evening. At this time, I would like, if Demary Pejek is here, please step forward with your feeling. Want to come all the way up here? If you can get through. Come on all the way up here. They're taller. A lot taller than I am. I would like everybody to, I'd like to introduce Demary Pejek to everybody here in the audience today. Demary is one of the two students or two residents of Midlothian who dedicated herself to receiving the Tom Dart Cook County Sheriff's Honor Award by over a thousand hours of volunteering. That's incredible, in one year. That's a lot of hours. A lot of these people are well-known because they also volunteer a lot of their times. So this evening, I have a plaque for you and it says, "Let it be known that the people of the Village of Midlothian recognize the dedication, perseverance, leadership, citizenship, and hard work necessary to earn the Youth Service Medal of Honor. On this fourteenth day of January 2015, through their elected leadership, hereby congratulate Demary Pejek on demonstrating those positive attributes within herself while achieving this prestigious award." Congratulations. Is Tom Walsh here?
Yes.
Yes. Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Are you ready for?
Yeah, you want to present?
Sure.
You said?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. I'm Rick Heidner. Oh, my goodness. I don't sing. Will be. My name's Rick Heidner. I own Ricky Rockets Fuel Centers. We've opened our first one over in Hoffman Estates on Barrington Road in Hassel. It's a project, a fuel center, not just a gas station. We'd like to talk to you about, with you already mayor, and talk to you about the corner of 147th and Cicero. I brought some things for the board to have so they can see everything, if that's okay. So what I'm looking to do is start some talks with the village to see if we can work together for me to develop that entire stretch that's on Harlem Avenue. With a, I'm sorry, Cicero. To put a Ricky Rockets Fuel Center, which will include a 130-foot car wash tunnel, diesel facilities for filling semi-trucks and work trucks. And then, what I do is, is I, it's not just a convenience store or a food store with gas. It's an entire center that would be, the one that I have in Hoffman Estates has Dunkin' Donuts, Subway, Domino's Pizza. And just infill that, all that property going to the north on Cicero, starting at the corner and just working my way down. The one that I built in Hoffman Estates has been successful. It's a little too small. All the ones that I'm doing in the future are going to be much larger, like this one will be. The store itself will be in the, probably the 14,000 square foot size. And then the center next to it, I'll probably be building around 12,000 square feet. So we'll start off with 26,000 square feet. And then we'll have separate diesel pumps, diesel facilities for trucks. Things that are very important that I learned from the first one is, definitely we'd need a liquor license for the Ricky Rockets. And then, we would like to, you know, have the ability to have a few more liquor licenses as we're going down the street to facilitate more restaurants and places like that. I know there's a Subway right across the street. I've worked with Ozzy's Deli that I've talked to that would really like to be, follow me wherever I go with the Ricky Rockets. I welcome anyone to call the Village of Hoffman Estates, talk to the mayor, as I asked you to, so that you could see how happy they are with our facility and what we do. It's very much not like a normal place that you're sort of used to. It's a tremendous amount of glass. It's very inviting. It's very open, so people can see it from the street, from the pumps. I really spare no expense. I gave you one that I'm doing in East Dundee. It's about a 14 and a half million dollar project there. I spent 6.7 million on the one I did in Hoffman Estates. It's too small though. It's on 1.76 acres. All the rest that I do, I'm looking to do much larger. And I know we talked about the, somewhat of the truck parking. You know, that would be important, maybe at least in the beginning. And then as I develop, I would develop half the property to start with and then continue to move further down Cicero, as I said, going north. I, my history is, I was in the convenience store business since 1978. I started with 7-Eleven. I had three 7-Elevens, went independent then with J.J. Pepper's Food Stores, sort of built that up. Got in the real estate side of things very heavily. I built, I built over 50 centers. I own and still own a little under 200 properties. I have over 2 million square feet and 700 tenants. So what I could bring to the community is what I already have, you know? And this Ricky Rockets thing, I gave you the article from the Herald. You know, that was unsolicited. That was just a customer that came in that worked for the Herald and he got it. Everybody seems to get it. People are very drawn to the place. They're very, you know, they feel good when they come there. And that was what I was trying to accomplish. So again, I definitely would help with your community in order to do this project, but it is definitely a spot that we would be very interested in going to. Any questions?
How many acres do you want?
I would want all the property. Right from the corner all the way down.
17 acres?
Yeah.
16 acres.
Yeah, I would start and develop half of it and then just continue going more. I'm a developer. I've developed in the, you know, like I said, over 50 properties and about 200.
And right down the street, I have a question. Right down the street, right to the south is in Thorntons.
Yes.
And what do you see as like that? I think the board would probably concur. We don't want to have one business start and put somebody else out of business.
I feel there's plenty of business here on Cicero and being on 147th here with the East and West. They don't have a real diesel offering for people, which I think is something that's really important. And mine's a whole convenience center. It's going to, you know, I believe we can maybe we get Dunkin' Donuts here. The closest one that I can see is down Harlem. It's a little bit over, I'm sorry, down Cicero, it's a little bit over. Sorry, not Harlem, too, looking there. Pulaski, too. But, you know, these are things that we could put inside the store or have on the outside. If you look at the ones that I have, you know, we have Dunkin' Donuts in a separate building with the drive-through, you know, with the building with the Subway and the Domino's Pizza.
So you would already have a gas station that would move into your?
I'm in the gas station. I'm Ricky Rockets Fuel Center. This is my project right here.
Oh, because the picture say mobile.
It's a mobile, but it's a Ricky Rockets Fuel Center. It's only branded mobile. I can brand anything. Or it could be a shell. There's a mobile close. I could be a, or actually, at this point with the success that this one has had, you know, we even realized that we can go unbranded and not even put up a, you know, a branded model. So the plan is, is, you know, if we're doing the one in East Dundee, it looks like, I gave you plans for that one. We're doing the one in East Dundee. And we're planning on hopefully getting five done by the end of 2016. And then, you know, immediate going from five to 10 and then seeing where it takes us from there.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this, is your concept similar to what Delta Sonic did in Crestwood, just north of us on Cicero?
Uh, it, well.
With the exception of the diesel fuel?
You know, I will say, they have a nice offering. They're more, I think they're more focused normally on car wash than the other part. But yeah, what they've done down there is very nice, you know.
Is it similar to what you have in your center?
You're welcome to see what I do. I think mine's a little bit nicer. It's basically a whole convenience center. A whole fuel center, not just a one thing. And you're welcome to pass that around.
When we had first met, you had mentioned that you knew Hamilton Partners, who is currently managing our property up there.
Correct.
Were you able to reach out to them?
I did reach out to them. I, you know, I'll be honest with you. I got a little frustrated when I called them. They basically, after we, I normally do things, because when it's me, to be honest with you, things sometimes go crazy. You know, once somebody realizes I want something, then all of a sudden goes a little bit nuts. So, you know, through my office, through my other entities, we put out that we were interested. We put in an offer and they actually came back to us and told us exactly what we were doing. Wanted a full price offer. Wanted to come to you guys for the difference if I wanted it for any less. Said they wanted the TIF money and I got a little frustrated. And so I pulled my offer back and told them I wasn't interested at all. And it was only for that reason, you know, we were looking here and we're looking down in Crestwood. I prefer to be here if people were things. But when, you know, when somebody tells you they're, you know, they're, there's no such thing as what they said to me, except they took my concept then and then they basically told me they were going to shop there. And it was very frustrating for me.
So you're saying the company, we have representatives for that property?
I don't believe they were representing you. They were representing whoever owns the corner.
They represent both of us.
Yeah, they represent both of us.
Well, I don't, you know, if, I'm not used to someone telling me my own business, you know? And when I, I didn't tell them what I was going to do. I just said I was interested in the corner and they came back telling me what I was going to do. Telling me who I was. Telling me, telling me, you know, telling me that we together were going to go see if I could do what I want. We together were going to go and see how much money I could get to give, you know? I offered them 2 million dollars, you know, and they came back at 2.8, you know, blah, 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 blah. So I pulled my offer back, but I figured we're going to start here. If I have to put in a full price offer now, I could, you know, maybe they'll raise it 200 then because they know it's me. I know what I can't tell you.
Can I ask you, when you put me in that offer, was that just for the hard corners, the privately owned parts?
Correct.
Okay, that wasn't for the entire 16 acres?
No, but I had already came and met with the mayor and talked about, you know, the whole thing, you know?
Okay, so you are interested in purchasing all 16 acres?
Correct. Correct. Because I'd like to control what's going down there, too, and to add things that would be complimentary to the whole center. Again, originally when I talked to the mayor, I talked for just about, probably developing about half of it, using the second half as semi-truck parking. Because it creates a community of customers. And I've gotten some feedback that that might not be something that you guys would be in love with. So, you know, if I can get that maybe a little bit in the beginning to help me pay for some things and then just keep looking down. Again, I, you know, Cicero Avenue up to 147th Streets. Good retail area. And I feel like I can just continue to go down. I can build 25,000 square feet, starting right off the gap and get that. I'm a big part of it, number one. Number two, I have people that'll follow me that'll just fill that space right in. As we start getting busy and busy and busy, it's no problem for me to continue down, going down the block. But this is a very, very expensive, very, very high line, very, very, this is not a, you know, two or three million dollar project. This is a 15 million dollar project to start.
Do you have a commitment to Dunkin' Donuts and all these?
I have Dunkin' Donuts who wants to follow me in all of these. And sometimes there's going to be a restriction because whoever has a Dunkin' Donuts close is going to say, "You're too close." And then they have to do a study, cost $10,000. You know, it's up to Dunkin' Donuts to say yes or no. If I go to put it inside the store, if I, if they wouldn't, if they say, "And the other one's too close," really the one that's over on Pulaski is going to be, that's really far. You know, that's eight blocks to the east and you're really under nine blocks to the, to the, to the north, too.
Can you go to Starbucks?
I was going to say Starbucks.
We definitely can look at Starbucks, too. And to be honest with you, the one, I welcome anyone to go to Barrington and Hassel. It's literally right off of 90 Barrington Road and you just, you just, I drove it, you know, because I went that way. It's just, it's the first light to the south and just look at the whole thing. So we have Starbucks right near store. We have Dunkin' Donuts. And again, people for me, you know, I don't own the Dunkin' Donuts. I lease to them. I get a franchisee. There's some pictures of their stores, the Subway store. And, you know, I have people in the industry that said, "Rick, are you crazy? Are you crazy spending this kind of money on a gas station? Are you crazy?" I kept telling them, "It's not a gas station, it's a fuel center." This is my new concept, my new idea. And I put my money where my mouth was. And I don't own the Dunkin' Donuts. A franchisee takes that. I don't own the Subway. A franchisee takes that. But I sacrifice coffee in my store in order to get what I'm looking for, which is an entire fuel center.
But to keep everybody happy at Starbucks?
I definitely would pursue Starbucks, to be honest with you. I definitely can tell you, Starbucks rents from me and at least in half a dozen places, okay? So I have contact with Starbucks, definitely. But I actually could have Dunkin' Donuts and then half a block down or, or literally the next building could be a Starbucks. I can't make them come here. That would be their decision. But I would be very open to having a Starbucks. Very open to having a Starbucks.
And just so you know, we did have that property appraised. We had all 16 acres. And that was this one, because we had people kicking at the tires all the way there. So we do that for our profit.
Well, you know, I've been talking down the street, too. I don't want to be across the street from Speedway. You know, that's a caveat for me. I do feel I lose some traffic coming, I'm just going to be honest, you know? I feel like I'm losing some traffic coming from the north to the south by the time you leave Midlothian Road and you get to here. And that was a little bit of a concern of mine, but I don't really want to be across from the Speedway. That's another one I'm looking at. I prefer to be here. This is way more expensive than I can, than I can do something down there. But I prefer to be here if I can be, you know, we could work together. I'm obviously, I know it's a tip restriction. I'm going to need some help, you know? We could figure it out as we go along, but I just wanted to show you who I am, what I have, what I would like to do. And I'd like to work quickly or I'd like to go upstream.
Is your current place in Hoffman Estates, is it an intersection?
It is. It's Barrington and Hassel. It's, I have gas stations close to me, too. You know, I have a BPMCO that, there's my Ricky Rockets, there's my retail center, then there's the center with Starbucks in it right next to me. And then there's a BPMCO on Higgins, which is a real main intersection.
Are you close to residential areas at all?
I am.
So diesel fuels, is that an issue?
I have diesel here, but I don't have the diesel like I have, like I'm looking for. Here, this is a big, big property, so we shouldn't have any problem with that at all.
Will there be parking over there? Trucks will just be, you won't, you won't have?
So originally, when I came and talked to the mayor, the project I'm doing in East Dundee actually has a tremendous amount of truck parking. To me, it really enhances and gets people to, that are using the trucks to be there. Again, I was getting the feedback that it wasn't something you guys were really looking for, for me to, I wanted to take half the property, make it all truck parking and half the property developed with a much larger, with what I already have already. But now, you know, I'd like to go further down and just continue to do the retail. So I'd like to get some truck parking in the beginning. Maybe we get some kind of timeframe where I have to continue to develop. So in this case, there's 1,400 spaces. And again, I'm spending, you know, in this case, just for the original project. It's going to be probably in the 14, 15 million dollar range. We generate a lot of taxes, a lot of sales tax, a lot of fuel tax and things.
What's the walk going to be like?
We have a, can I have the book?
The problem is we're empty for how many years that we haven't made a dime in the city or nobody's made a dime on? Competition's great, so, you know, sitting there empty is not, making nobody money. So at least, you know, produce something. We should be, open our hands up, you know? Because it's ridiculous. It's a joke that we're talking about here.
Normal?
This and that, you know? Been empty for how long now? Seven, eight years? And there haven't been a dime in that property?
A normal gas station is 2 to 3 million dollars. This is not normal. This is, this is, now, you know, again, I feel people are really drawn to it. Everything I really thought that I was trying to achieve, I did achieve. You know, the bathrooms are super clean. The place is very open space. Again, I put the Dunkin' Donuts because I knew it would draw more people. You could see, I'm very proud of that. And you're going to get this.
Plus.
Plus.
And you've got landscaping. You've got landscaping here.
Oh, gorgeous, absolutely. We decorate for Christmas.
It doesn't look like a truck stop.
No, 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 no. It's a fuel center. You're going to come there and you're going to get amenities. And the car wash, when I built that car wash, it's a 110-foot tunnel. I told the guys, I said, because again, I live here, you know? I wanted the diesel fuel for my RV. We like Dunkin' Donuts. My kids like Subway. We took the things that were important to us, we wanted, and we put it there. And.
Are you open to any fun businesses coming in? I mean, you're talking about Starbucks and, I mean, we've already got the Dunkin' Donuts. We've already got the Subway and stuff. I mean, other businesses that come in and say to you, I would, you know? So we can kind of change our image here in Midlothian.
And again, when you look at this, you can see I spare no expense. Everything you see here, you will have and more, okay? So this is the minimum you have. The car wash, for example, I told the guys, when they built the car wash, I want the car clean. I don't care what it takes. So they came back to me and I said, "Whatever you think, I want it to be spectacular." They came back and, for an example, your rims and things like, I know you have Delta Sonic. You know, that's a, you know, a longer, you know, process and stuff. So when they came in and I said, "Okay, this is what you have," I go double it. You know, double, double, double the sprayers on the wheels. Double the brushes on the wheels. I want every room to be clean, you know? So, and this is a 110-foot tunnel. I'll do a 130-foot tunnel.
How many employees?
Just in my store, okay? With the size of the store I want to build here, we'll have in the 25 employee range total. At this particular one I have, I have 14. It's a much smaller store. It's 4,200 square feet.
Who put tax revenue being approximately, did you know?
In this particular area, in this particular one, the Village of Hoffman Estates, therein is 25,000. That's therein, when you add up all the taxes that they get.
This would be much, much larger.
And, you know, the fuel, it's amazing, it amazes me, to be honest with you, you know? In that particular one, in the Ricky Rockets, you know, we do a million dollars a month right now in sales. The first 320,000 isn't taxed, because it's all taxed. You know, it's all fuel tax and federal tax and this and that. And then I pay another 60, 65,000 in sales tax.
So how much revenue handling will it bring to Midlothian?
This one should do much, should be more than that one.
And again, a lot of that would be, it's in a TIF district. That factors in. And I think so, really, there's a lot of unknowns. You'd have to continue dialogue with the board.
Right, right.
The attorney would have to be involved.
Definitely.
And again, it's a TIF district and that factors in, too.
But a TIF runs out and then you get, you know, whatever. Obviously, I need help if I'm going to spend this kind of money and.
No, we understand that, but probably have to.
But what I can tell you is, you know, I have the experience. I've been in the convenience store business since 1978. I built a small chain of convenience stores called J.J. Pepper's Food Stores. And I stopped many years ago and went really heavy into the real estate. That's how I acquired, you know, the 200 buildings and built all these things. And now, this is definitely, you know, my baby, my, my spectacular thing. And I don't build itself, you know? I just don't do that. So I'll be keeping this.
Well, like I told you when we first met, the number one big stumbling block we have with Cicero Avenue Properties is we don't own the hard corner. That is a stumbling block. It has been a stumbling block since I became the mayor. I have been trying to work with the hard corner owner for, since I got sick. And he is not the easiest to deal with. And so I can run, I actually tried to give him some of this information and he has not yet returned my phone calls or anything, because I wanted to see how his feedback would be toward this project.
Well, I mean, basically, they came back and told me about selling for 2.8 million dollars.
Right, well, that's been a nasty price since I became mayor. And so I reached out to him to see if maybe he would sway a little bit. And I haven't heard back from him. So I am working on that.
At 2.8 million, I don't think he could say no, but, you know?
Exactly.
I have a question.
Yes.
With the TIF money, is there any way that you can make that corner part of that TIF or to help out our Creeks situation? With the Creeks, like, can you use that?
No, no.
I was just asking.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
One more question over here?
Yes.
Are you going to have video gaming?
Video gaming would be important, you know, to any, any truck stop or gas station or retail center or anything that you do now. So the answer would be, would be definitely something we'd be looking for, yes.
What will happen with the water?
What will happen with the water tower plans?
We would have to relocate the water tower.
I definitely would like my map back. Treasure that. Oh, and if you get out the gas station, you know, see if it's... Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, my book, who has my book? Uh, I don't think it's a book, those you can have.
Yeah, this time I would like to open the floor for public comment. Before we start with public comment, Chief Cockman?
I'd like to take a moment to offer my sincere apology to the residents, employees, elected officials of the Village of Midlothian for my recent comments regarding the police department's keen eye Bico. As many of you are aware, I made a comment during a telephone conversation with the Oak Forest Police Department dispatcher, where I stated that there was a possibility that I would have to shoot and kill Bico. The purpose of my telephone call to the Oak Forest Police Department was to seek counsel or other housing for Bico after his handler informed the village that he was leaving for new employment. As a trained police dog, he could not be placed with an untrained handler or kept in a matter of a typical house bed. My statement about shooting Bico was however admittedly inappropriate and unprofessional. I assure you that at no time did I actually intend to shoot Bico or harm him in any way. I could offer explanation and excuses for my comments and conduct, the type of deflection that would not be appropriate given by my position as a chief of police. As a head of police department, I recognize that I need to accept responsibility for my actions and move forward accordingly in the same fashion that I would expect all my officers to do. I'm hopeful that everyone can find it within their hearts to accept my sincere and heartfelt apology and promise to govern my statements more responsibly in the future. I am happy to report that Bico is safe and is being well cared for by his new handler, who is employed by the Village of Midlothian Police Department. Bico has adapted well to his partner, and the two are currently training together. Training has been progressing well. We are confident that Bico will be back in action providing services to the resident of Village of Midlothian soon. Thank you.
If you would like to address the board, now would be the time.
Okay. Nobody?
Hi Helen.
Yeah, Helen.
Okay, just updates on our situation. So Thursday, two of us attended the downtown meeting at the Army Corps of Engineers for the rain-ready kickoff meeting. And got a map from the Army Corps. It's gonna be interesting to see what the results of our survey are gonna be. There's gonna be a second map that's gonna be a layover, so it's gonna show us actual, based on our survey, based on, you know, what we now know versus what they then knew. So I thought it was pretty interesting that the survey showed, our rain-ready survey that went out to our residents, showed that sixty percent of the people who responded don't live on a floodplain who experience what we do. So that's a good start, moving forward with projects. Then Friday, we were here with all the agencies again for the collaborative stormwater meeting. And the only one thing I really want to say about that is, we've been going to a lot of meetings because we meet a lot of people. It's an opportunity to network. And while I know Joe is really busy, and everybody knows Floodlothian loves Joe, we'd really like to see a little bit more of somebody from, you know, our village attending these meetings, because as I know, Trustee Christ knows, you're in a lot of these meetings for other reasons, not pertaining necessarily to our cause. But you know how many people you meet and how that kind of pans out. And this is, you know, like, the fourth time I've been somewhere with Josh Ellis, and it took from then till now to even connect the dots for him, who we were.
But I think it was a huge connection on Friday.
Yeah, but we met him over a year ago at MWRD, and we were talking land banks then. You know, he's never been here. And so that's why I think, having been to Bartlett, to IDNR, and, you know, connecting so many times with TNT, and being at so many of the MWRD meetings in the south suburbs, we've made a lot of connections. And, well, of course, we are terribly thrilled about our article, "Thank You Messenger." This was a real big deal for our group, to be nominated for the U.S. Water Alliance Prize. And to be nationally recognized for our efforts is huge. So the next thing that came up was NBC, Chris Coffey came to do an investigative report. He spent the better half of the early afternoon with us at my house, or flood headquarters. And that should be airing by the end of the week. I do have a question. USGS was out yesterday on one hundred and forty-nine. Do you know anything about that? They were like walking through the creek, looked like they were measuring something again.
Are you sure it was them?
USGS trucks.
They're probably setting up the flow near, you know, the bog age.
Like the second or third, I mean, it's already doing what it's doing. They were like walking, measuring, walking through the land.
They told me they would kind of take me when they figure out plan and how they're gonna do things.
Okay. Because what are we waiting for? Expanding on the feature that measures speed and volume?
Yeah, and then they have to just build up a database, you know, they have to, you know, follow. Obviously, that went in, and now there's no storms, so.
Just trying to figure out what the, just trying to figure out...
No, I mean, it's just something that takes time, they have to study.
The measuring, what made it interesting. Okay, then the other thing is John Watson, I was a little bit not real excited about the presentation, because why are we even still talking about the sixty million? It's never gonna happen. It almost felt like he came with a cookie cutter presentation, because...
He wasn't really on board with everything that was coming out.
I felt that way, yeah, okay.
We had a meeting after that, he wasn't there, so he's not really...
No, I liked him, but I felt like they sent him with something that some of that information was irrelevant, and the other agencies in the room wouldn't even know that that sixty million isn't ever gonna come to...
I think they just wanted to have something to hear about. He's part of that group.
Yeah.
And I guess he just came for that.
Okay, and I did receive the historical map, but what I think he did not gather, which I was talking to Christopher Burke Engineering Guy. Tom, Thomas. I met him at Northwestern. And I'm looking for the underground water movement maps. Yeah, I'm looking for the, there's two words, hydrologic, hydrological, hydro something. That's what I'm looking for, because there's underground water movement. We need to know that moving forward with, you know, projects and why our houses are falling in the ground. So the other thing, one more, let's see, a couple more things. We're excited, we received some new equipment. So we're gonna be better equipped to go out and actually, we get four waterproof video and cameras. So we're gonna, we're gonna get real technical with our evidence that we're gonna be shelling out there to MWRD this spring and summer, or if it's anything like last year in February. And we were hoping you can give us a community rating system update, because I've recently been going through my notes. And we did tell you a year ago in February that after I talked to FEMA a number of times and tried to read that manual, I am not engineer enough to do it. And so a year seems like enough time that we should have been moving along with that. So we would appreciate an update. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
There's no answer.
Yes?
I have a question regarding the finance committee's proposed one point seven million dollars. The, two of the things that are on there are the property transfer tax and the nine-one-one increase are both referendums, so they have to be voted on. So how can we count that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that might not pass? See, the new CSO officer is slated to bring in fifty-one thousand dollars in addition to what the CSO officer we have now. I just, I didn't, I didn't know how we got about that number. Forty-five hundred for the signing of water bills via email, that's definitely a good one. The one percent food and beverage tax and liquor tax, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, how did we estimate that? Did we do a study on the businesses that were fact?
So Dave, I can answer your question about the one point seven million dollars.
Okay.
That list represented items that we could pull the trigger on or implement in order to plug the gap. It's been nearly two years since we've received financial reports from the village's accounting system. And so we're working with a cash projection that says it's a million too. And we wanted to come up with a list of things that we thought could reasonably close that gap before we had to vote on a tax increase. So yeah, we, I think we're all aware, everybody in the finance committee was aware that two of those items required a referendum, and that didn't mean that they would pass. But it was our stopgap at the time, to be able to address that gap until we actually get some financial reports.
Okay.
And there were some, there were some estimates made on the food and beverage tax based on sales reports to the Illinois Department of Revenue. It's probably a year, a year old maybe. But there was some, there was some intelligence behind that. And I don't recall how we estimated the number of the dollars for the CSO, but it was based on a number of tickets, I think, from the police department that our current CSO had written.
Okay. Yeah, just because the stuff that is on the list here, the four hundred thousand in the water and sewer rate increase that was implemented back in August, so that's not gonna be new monies for 2015.
Well, it was already being... It was implemented, but it wasn't included in the current cash projection. That was the problem, because we've been working on cash projections without real financial numbers behind them. That didn't really come into effect until August billing. And based on water increases from Midmark Water Commission, based on their late fees, so our water late fees in the village increased. I know I've heard a lot of comments about that. It went from ten percent to twenty percent. And that's because we're also being charged, I think it was the waste penalty, from Midmark Water Commission. And we have to pay for the water before we actually send it to residents through the pipes and bill for it a couple months later.
Can I ask a question? So if Midmark Water Commission is charging Midlothian a penalty for paying late, then that means that that penalty is getting passed on to us, is that right?
That's correct.
That's why water's so high. Okay, who has a problem with that? I was trapped for cash, but now because the village can't pay that water bill on time to Midmark, our water bills are going up twenty percent because we have to pay, we have, we're the ones who are absorbing that twenty percent.
The twenty percent, the twenty percent is the late fee.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. The twenty percent late fee is being passed on to us.
We're three months behind, right? We're three months behind?
That's only a year late on my bill.
The last one from September will be over two months or three months.
That's not what I'm...
We're two months behind.
So is the twenty percent if I'm late on my bill? Or is Midmark charging Midlothian a twenty percent late fee?
Midmark will charge us if we are late, by two months.
Right, are we late?
We are two months, we owe them two months right now.
So...
If we pay them before the sixty days is up, we don't pay late.
And the late fee on your bill is if you're late, not because, no, not because I'm late.
Right, but if Midlothian is late paying Midmark, and Midmark assesses Midlothian a fee.
Yeah.
That's coming out of our tax dollars when we pay them.
The water rate component did not go up because of the Midmark late fee. But our late fee that we assess in the village did go up for that reason.
Okay, and I did get here extremely early, so I did not happen to see the pile of bills on the table for review. I left five copies.
I left five copies on the table this time.
He's got my copy.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? If not, I will close the floor to public comment. And board members, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda is the approval of the levy hearing minutes from December eighth, the special board meeting on December eighth, the board meeting from December tenth, the special meeting minutes from December twenty-second, the bill list, and the department reports from the police and public works.
I'd like to ask that number three come off, approve the board meeting minutes from December tenth. I noticed there was quite a few errors there, and I think we gotta revise. December tenth.
Because they all have done corrected.
Do the November board meeting minutes still need to be approved? Because I recall in December that the November meeting minutes were not approved.
They were approved last meeting.
In December?
Mm-hmm, in the last meeting in December. The November twelfth minutes were approved.
But that wasn't a December board meeting, wasn't that like a, that's a special meeting?
Yes.
And I did send you, Mayor, a number of corrections. I'm just assuming that they were all incorporated?
They were all incorporated, yes. Because Clerk Holstead is off, had also given me some corrections.
Maybe in the future, so we could alleviate my trusty little concerns. Once they're corrected, we could get a corrected copy before the board meeting. Forget, is that what you're looking for, Gary?
I'd love to read the minutes prior approval.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that number three can be up here. Sorry, here.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus number three.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Christ?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Philley?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
At this time, I'd be seeking a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment or discipline of specific employee collective bargaining issues and probable litigation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All those in favor? Roll call, sorry, roll call.
Trustee Christ?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Philley?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
There will be action items after we return from closed session. At this time, I'd like to, may, you have a motion to go back into open session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Is that done?
Yep.
Don Philley?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to trustee business, trustee press. A couple quick moments, Helen alluded to. We, the Village of Midlothian hopes to be telling a stormwater collaborative on Friday. And there were thirty-seven individuals signed in. And we had representatives from IDNR, Homeland Financial Resources, the Water Reclamation District, Metropolitan County Council, Harriet, was here, Harriet Hasting from Center for Naval Technology. We had people from all over, and I especially want to thank Helen and Floodlothian Midlothian, because I think their presence made a huge impact that day. We had...
Army Corps.
Army Corps, yeah, Army Corps. I mean, I'm sure, Co-County.
Woo, Forest Reserve.
Forest Reserve, the list went on and on. And I really think they were wowed by Floodlothian Midlothian. And literally, you can put Midlothian on a map. And I also want to thank Joe Sperry. Joe participated in the event, and Trustee Gillis was here as well, and I want to thank him. I just think they were, I, I, I think the message that Midlothian has a big problem is out there. And after the meeting, we did go on a tour. Joe led the tour. And so they got to see Natalie Creek firsthand, where it starts to overbank at one hundred and forty-ninth in Cogadrick, and Joe made sure they got to follow the path of the water. And Joe, thank you for that. Even though it was snow-covered and it was very, very cold. And then we ended up at the Floodlothian Midlothian headquarters. And so these individuals were able to see all of your efforts. And I think that's huge. They got to see firsthand the amount of time that all of you have put in, and you continue to put in. And the other thing that I was encouraged about, I'm getting a number of emails from Harriet Hasting. And as a result of Friday's meeting, there's going to be a post-colaborative meeting. And she asked for some input, so I had provided her with some additional names. And she said that, the email I got from her, that based on their studies so far, they want to do some risk mapping, because suggested there are problems with water management across the... the whole village. And they're looking for solutions, largely using green infrastructure. So again, I love Harriet's enthusiasm and her knowledge and so-
Can I have a post? Yes.
Can I tell you one thing?
Yes. One thing we learned the day before, I don't remember if she mentioned it here that day, but the day before when we were downtown at the Army Corps, the results of the survey, people could indicate whether they were willing to volunteer to have them come and do an assessment. I think we're going to learn a lot from that, individual home assessments to help a lot of people, especially the backup folks, what they might be able to do. So that's a very nice little perk to being part of this pilot study is we're going to get these free assessments. So the people who did take the time to fill out that survey will be glad when they're chosen.
So anyway, and the other thing that she, so we're going to have this meeting probably more towards the end of February. She's trying to get all of the movers and shakers and I came up with Sue Ellen Burns, Senator Open Mall, her, she was a big part of the Millennium Reserve from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, talking about putting connections together. I told her the Economic Transportation Alliance. So we're trying to bring all of these players to the table and I'm sure, I think she reached out, did she reach out to you about that as well?
Who, Harriet?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then she also sent me another email. She's putting together another funding request and she wanted to know about communities upstream and downstream affected. So I have been communicating with her and again, she continues to seek out funding and opportunities. So the other thing, I had told Josh that I, that we would be glad to host again. So I just want them to know that we were really appreciative that they came out to the lowian because it was a really cold day and a lot of them took the train and I thought they had, we had outstanding attendance. So thanks to everybody who was involved and keep going Team Flinlowian, the lowian. And we got, we got to meet Dominic Toasty from Cook County Economic Development.
Whose mom used to live on Kildare.
His mother did? Okay, so we then-
Jay Cut.
We then, I cornered him and we're continuing the conversation about the, money for the engineering study for the homes that do not flood, that are in the flood plain. And I think we made a huge enroll in that respect and we're trying to get a meeting together with South Suburban Mayors and Managers. By the way, they were at the meeting on Friday. So all of these things are going on.
You're supposed to provide me a date for something, a date for something.
Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to get something different.
Like, oh, you, you have, keep talking.
So I'm done with Kelly McStrom Water Cooperative and Water for now. Now we're going to move on to the EPA grant, which also keeps me busy. I talked to our consultants yesterday. They called me, made a conference call. And the grant ends in September. And we did a community outreach meeting, oh, probably about a year ago, and we need to do another one. Very important part of this grant. And so we've scheduled it for February 26th. We need community involvement. The United States Environmental Protection Agency wants community involvement. And who came to mind as far as community involvement and willing to, to put their voice to a project is Flinlowian, the lowian. So I reached out to Helen and she agreed to, to help get residents to the community outreach. And I also reached out to Carl Ivan in Dutification. So, and anyway, again, this is community wide. This EPA grant is, it, there's a ton of work going on. Phase ones have been done on the Cicero Avenue property. Phase twos will be starting. It's, it's all targeted for economic development. So we're going to need community input and that will be, yes, Kathy?
Last year when you had talked about it, I think the grant was about $400,000 and it was to be spent on phase ones.
Phase twos.
And you were, and you were in the process of reaching out to all the different commercial and industrial property owners here in town. What has been the success rate so far, like of all the buildings that could have had a study done?
You know what, probably-
Is it 30%, 40%, 50%?
Maybe 50. We've reached out to many, many of the property owners that would qualify and some of them don't want any part of it. And it's free, they don't, with the unresulting economic development. And we just, we have another phase one on with Brown's Chicken. That, that's our latest. So it's been a very difficult grant to manage. It's been very difficult to manage.
Yeah, I'm curious, the, the former gas station property at the corner of 147 Bunk Hesey, that's next to the Tasty Freeze, that's that property owner taking advantage?
Oh, I can't tell you how many times I approached him and he's not interested. No, he was one of the first ones. So, and again, if anybody knows of a site, give me the name, the site and the owner and if I ever contacted them, I will. But again, we can take advantage of this because there's no match and it's all just for economic development. So mark your calendars, February 26th, it will be in this room at 7:00 PM. And we'll start getting information from our consultants to help us here for the meeting. And then the only other update is Veterans Committee will be meeting here on Monday evening, George, Monday evening at 7:00 PM. And that's all. Trustee Shavoni?
Yes. The zoning board met back on, we could go Monday on the 5th. And that mayor, you're going to address your business a little bit later on the request for status? All right. Planning meeting met yesterday. I sent along a copy of their minutes. There were no major revelations. They just went over the minutes of previous meetings and they were approved. And additionally, did everyone get a copy of the Safe Speed Contract? Has everybody gotten that? I want everybody to be able to see it and go over it, whatever. I guess Attorney Gleason still has some questions. He's running past the vendor on this matter. And we're talking about resolution and we're going to talk about that under your business also. So I'll hold the rest of my remarks for that time. And that's what, all I have right now.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes, I would like the board to know that firefighter Juan Ramirez, who was a part-time firefighter, has passed his EMT paramedic course and his state test, so congratulations on that. And I did get information from Chief Hopwagner that he received a check today for a grant that the fire department applied for and received. It's an equipment grant for nearly $11,000, which is also no match. And I'd like to go on record that I appreciate Chief Kaufman's apology. Being a dog owner, I am appalled that you have done this as a department head. I don't accept your apology. Thank you. That's all I have.
Trustee LaRue?
I have nothing to say.
Trustee Philili?
Just a CRS update and there is no update last, since New Year's, I was basically out with the flu, so we'll get on it, we'll get on it recently.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Based on that, Tom, you know, would it be moving better along if, you know, an engineer like, if-
We did talk, I talked to Jeff, had a meeting with Jeff. He played out pretty much what I had to do. Some of it is getting paperwork with Jeff will help me. Kathy is the volunteer to help on that regard. Part of it is we have to change our ordinances to mirror MWRD's ordinances. That will help a lot. So just have to get on, it's basically a lot of paperwork out and Jeff will help us with some of the elevations and things like that that I don't know anything about. All I got to do is ask if we can get this going.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is when I talked to, is his name Jeff Coquy, trying to remember, it's been about four or five months since I spoke with him last, but in our many conversations, he indicated that this would be something most productively done by a full-time city employee with day-to-day access to all of the records, preferably with an engineering background or, you know, Joe, like he doesn't have nothing else to do, but just saying. You know, it's their recommendations and not-
I didn't get that impression of going over it with Jeff. A lot of it was, he had to give us some studies and there's no doubt about that. He has to help out in that, but a lot of it is just submitting paperwork, a lot of it. So if I run into roadblocks, then I'll have to stop and say, hey, wait, this is way beyond where I should be. But it seemed like we had a plan that we could do a lot of, a lot of good things without a lot of expertise and that's, that's me with no expertise, but you know, learning on the job.
You're going to be one.
Just like, just like you, Helen, you know?
We're going to be one.
That's what it's going to be. So you're my, you're my model and that. And then basically I have to learn on the job a little bit and know what, and find out what I don't know and find out if I can find out.
Okay, well, thanks for taking us on. We appreciate that.
Well, don't thank me until, we'll get it done.
But we know you're trying.
And that's all.
Trustee Mascol?
I have nothing to say.
Your business, nothing, Jeff can be here this evening. Chief Kaufman, any other comments?
No record.
Chief Hopwagner?
Nothing.
Superintendent Sperry?
I'd just like to urge more residents to sign up for the Code Red. Good tool for us to use when we're going to have snow falling, water main breaks, we have to shut down the water. It's a nice way to communicate, you know? We have to run door to door, it takes up a lot of our time. And last week I put in a Code Red for a two-block stretch and there was only two homeowners that were signed up to it, you know? Took longer for me to do that than to run the door to door. So we can just urge the citizens to sign up for that. That's all.
Okay, under my business, I'd be looking for the approval of the resolution for the transfer stamp tax ballot question. I supply all of you with that.
I'll make the motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor, sorry, just one comment.
Yes.
And I just to remind everyone that this is simply an approval by the board to post the question on the ballot. It's going to go on record.
This was one of many, many options that the board came up with so that we would not have to impose a property tax increase.
Even if majority of the voters approved it, it still doesn't have to happen.
Correct.
Trustee Philili?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd be looking for the approval of the resolution for the 911 ballot question.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, seven.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Philili?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'd be looking for the approval of the ordinance for the implementation of the 1% food and beverage tax. I believe we discussed before, we'd like to start this in getting to March, the passage of this, we can then reach out to the businesses and let them know that it's going to be implemented.
Mayor, given your update that we may have financial information here next week, I'd like to know if we can table this.
Okay.
If we can determine if we really need it.
Oh, seven.
Motion to table. And second, Nigeryn. Roll call.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Philili?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
The table passes.
I'd be looking for the approval of the abatement ordinance for the 2014 levying.
We never got a copy of the abatement ordinance showing the 2010 bond in the abatement column, so I, only motion I would make would be we pass the abatement ordinance reflecting that the payment of principal interest to general obligation bond series 2010 be in the abated column.
I was never contacted by anyone to change what I had, so I was waiting for somebody to tell me to change it. I figured you asked me to put forth the abatement as is. This is the abatement I'm recommending to the board and still recommend to the board because of the discrepancies, not the discrepancies, but the lack of having the money in a separate account prior to these being paid. And I still recommend that the 2010 not be abated.
I would confer with trustee LaRue and if possible, I would like to make a motion that we amend on the face to abate the 2010 A bond.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor, may-
Yes.
You know, just based on what we just heard in the executive session, I don't know if that's responsible to do that right now. I don't agree with that people should have to pay twice for the same service and that's really what's happening here. I mean, they're paying their infrastructure and their gas tax and so on and so forth, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, this can bother me when I, when I heard some of the other issues and I'm not sure that that's where we should be going with this right now. I mean, we do have more time to abate.
Yes, we do.
And-
What's our deadline for?
What is our deadline?
April 1st.
April 1st, January 1st.
I would do it before then. That's kind of a self-imposed deadline with clerks. I would recommend we do it in March at the latest. Because the clerk just sends out a notification as to when he'll accept those bills. Last year, last year it was April 1st.
Just to be honest, I'd do it early.
I would rather.
At least sometime in March. Well, we can do it right, it's not like we can't. It's just, you know, you were dealing with the same, some of the similar issues we just heard about. It's sort of, I don't know if this is the right time to do that. In theory, I agree with this, but in practice. I think we need to have more discussion as a board. I don't think that it's something that we should move on right now, either way.
We've been told clearly by the mayor that we can amend this up until the time of filing, so why can't we just amend it later? Get it passed now and we had to amend it a minute later. Right, is that what you told us?
So we could re-amend the abatement to abate, not to abate?
Well, if you, once you file, you could file a motion to amend your, that service limit, so you could probably, you could amend your abatement too as long as you can put that on. The only risk you run is you're going to, because you may confuse the clerk.
We can table this and fill-
Does the motion second, so we'll both have to be withdrawn or?
Well, we could make the motion to table, although even though there's a motion right before, right?
No, because it's been seconded, it would have to be removed.
Go forward to the vote.
So there's a motion on the table to abate, alter the ordinance to abate the 2010 A bond for the abatement, yeah, for the abatement of the levying. And I have a first and second. Roll call.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Philili?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Motion failed. Sorry. Mayor Reba?
Nay.
Motion failed.
Now, if you would like to motion to table this, to vote on it.
I will make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Trustee Killiley?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Motion to table is passed.
The next item I have on here is the fire department is requesting to try to purchase an ambulance from Manhattan, not to exceed $20,000. I submitted with the board pack Chief Hockman's recommendation. I believe Trustee Gillis provided you pictures of it. This is a capital improvement. It could come out of our capital improvement fund money. Well, the fire department does have enough money in its own separate line item from ambulance. That money is being earmarked to pay like general bills and things, where this would be classified as a capital improvement to the village. It's younger and much more conducive to our fighters being able to perform like CPR. It's like a box one we already have, and it's not one of the little vans. And they also are talking about, with the acquirement of this, they would then sell one of our van ambulances to help offset the costs. So, I'd be looking for a motion to approve not to exceed $20,000.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
You know, I think the big problem is if we had financials, I suppose we, you know, not that we're gun-shitting, but we think that we are gun-shitting, but everything apparently now, and, you know, I understand that basically you shouldn't be putting your turnout gear in the back of the ambulance with all the medical equipment. Isn't that the real issue with this whole thing?
That's what it bears with, right? Because, well, first of all, it's patient department camping there, and unfortunately, when we operate, we really need to have our guys with gears in the ambulance, throttle accidents, and respond back to hospital room fighters. We've had it happen before, so we can't do it in the ambulance we have now. Plus, with the new one, it's set for air packs and everything, so everything you matter, guys can respond from the ambulance car, excuse me, right to a hospital fighter or something.
And we got the sales pitch from you guys to go to the transport. Never included, you never said nothing about needing two box ambulances, so why now we need to do that?
Well, that's because we're supposed to replace both ambulances before that. The ambulances were supposed to be replaced back in 2010, both the box, both the current ones we had now. With transporting, I don't used to, not if it, if I was a trustee, I told you about the box ambulances and the idea and...
And there was, there was like a, supposed to be like a fund set aside yearly to put aside for buying another ambulance.
Right, 'cause that's, that is the plan, right? We just started transport, put 40,000 or whatever we're talking, aside each year to be able to buy our own ambulance. Passed the board had to go up for all the money for the village.
2010 you didn't, we weren't transporting, so you were looking to replace the vans?
Yes, they're doing, we're getting replaced, and we were starting at 2010, talking about replacing the vans in 2010 because of age.
So, we was, there was still no mention of having needed two box ambulances?
It's also part of our five-year plan, going back to 2010, based on the year condition of the two box or two van ambulances. They are not in the condition that they're gonna hold up, where we're gonna be able to use them for transportation at the extent that we are doing that. I mean, they're piecemealing them together.
So, you're saying that they're as bad as the police cars were for five years that weren't replaced?
Worse.
Who said worse?
They fired you.
I guess my concern, and I know we need the equipment, but we're struggling. We don't have financial reports, okay? And we need to be able to make sure we can make payroll, and so I wish there was an motion on the floor, 'cause I think if we could have tabled this, given us time, we would have the financials next week, we, the board would be in a better position to make a decision, because really, right now, we're afraid to spend a penny.
And Wednesday, Day 1 of Manhattan?
They're picking, they're picking their new ambulances up in the beginning of February, so they want to do, they have to get out, because they've got to report it, so...
What it came to was, excuse me, chief, was the fact that the chief and deputy chief had been doing their labor, knowing that these pieces of equipment need be replaced. I mean, we're at a point where we've brought in almost a million dollars in the time that they've transported. I believe we spoke about putting money aside to replace the equipment. We can't continue to expect to bring this kind of service and just, you know, vantage the equipment we have. And it has nothing to do with police or fire, it has to do with the service we're giving. They've worked on getting the best deal possible. This piece of equipment, you know, would cost a lot more for shopping for it.
They've done it due diligence by looking to get the best deal possible.
You weren't paying back dollars?
That's what it costs for to buy one, and that's statute. I mean, the other one, we'd like someone bought the other one from Davidville. We got a good deal on that, and that turned up to be a real good deal, and it's working great. This is just a fix. I mean, this is like, nothing more than police are doing our public works, fixing our stuff to keep it going. Of course, we want something reliable, but we're dealing with safety and rest of the safety. This ambulance is in service still, and it's a good ambulance and a good price.
The net, the projected net cost of the village is around $5,000.
Yeah, like I said, I'm gonna try to give them an offer, a lot less than what I'm asking, and then selling one of the vans, I'm hoping to get it down to our actual cost, is gonna be around $5,000.
Ten maximum.
If we, if we get it for 15, we say we got 10 for our other ambulance.
But if you gave, if you took the net to the C...
Right.
Then it would be 10.
I believe it's $2,000 to make it.
And you expected to last another seven?
It's a real good shape. It isn't Manhattan, but I mean, they don't use, didn't use it on a lot of calls, but they get a lot of long-distance, hopefully. I can drive it back now. But it's a real good shape, and I know guys work in a property who drive it, so we don't, and the maintenance is very good at it. And it's not like going to a dealer and picking something up. This is something we know the track record, like we did, we did homework on new ambulance, and just the dealer need to pass up, because they won't get rid of it.
When this board took up the conversation of transportation over a year ago, there were people that cautioned about extended costs with this thing. The board went ahead and did. We're in for a penny, we're in for a pound. We're in for the cheaper side of a penny. The residents in this town now expect what you promised. You should hold yourself to that promise. You prom, what's, what's the...
Your saying? What promise?
The promise of good service to the residents, emergency care. You made that promise when you decided to go with this program.
Further discussion, I have a motion in the second. Roll call.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Killiley?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next one I'm going to not bring up, because we'll wait till the next meeting for the resolution to have me finish that out. The last thing on my list this evening is the approval of the rezoning for 14827 Cicero Avenue. I supplied you all with the zoning board minutes, and their recommendation is to allow the house to act like a house, but without rezoning it. So, I don't know if you wanna rezone, don't wanna rezone, just give them permission to act like a host, but you're not really a host.
Well, there's a couple of issues here, and one of the things that I've often thought, and I'm gonna ask that'll be done in the future, is I think that the building superintendent should show up at the planning committee hearings and the zoning board hearings, because he has insight that these people need to hear. The zoning board obviously heard the appeal by the petitioner who's in the audience tonight. He has a residence over there that he would like to enhance, but we are zoned business commercial, and obviously, we heard a statement tonight from a man who would like to bring a lot of business to that area, and I believe it's the board's intention to bring business to that area and build it up as a tax generating base. The zoning board chose not to rezone, but they said, because obviously, they wanna be thoughtful and compassionate to residents in town, that he could make the adjustments, the dormers he wants to add upstairs and whatever. I talked to the building superintendent on the next day, and he has concerns, and I bring them forward tonight, that the house, there's questions about its structure, especially holding weight and things like that on the second floor. So, he told me that if, in fact, they go ahead with the renovation, that he's gonna be very strict in wanting to see architectural design that can accommodate the weights of additional people living upstairs. Right now, it's just an attic and whatever. So, I think the board should be aware of that information and go from there. As you said, their, their recommendation was not to change the zoning, and that would be mine also.
I have, I have a legal question for the attorney. If it's a residence, and they wanna do this work, should it be rezone? I guess my question would be, would it be proper to rezonate residential?
You couldn't rezone it, or you could grant it a special use within the district?
I don't think we should leave it commercial for business, 'cause it's zoned, it's in the B district now, correct?
Yes, B3. So, what are we being asked tonight? We're being asked to approve a rezoning?
Whatever your pleasure is. I don't know if you wanna follow what the zoning board has recommended, or if you wanna rezone.
The petitioner wants to put dormer on the roof to build up the roof, so there's more accommodations in the second story, in the attic, to accommodate living quarters. And the zoning board was very particular in telling him that they did not, they did not want the roof, the peak of the roof raised. To kick out with dormers was acceptable to them, because they wanted to accommodate. The man put his money, his family into this house, and so it was, it was okay with them to put out the dormers, but not increase the height of the roof, because after all, it is zone, it is zone three, and I think the purpose was, the intention of the board originally in zoning of it, was that all that area there should be rezoned B3 and keep it business. I mean, we're, we're trying to move this village forward with it. And obviously, those homes there would probably be, if, in fact, somebody did come in and provide business opportunity, would probably offer them substantially more for the homes, 'cause they are older homes, and it's, this one is, is in desperate need of updating and renovation. So, I would be hesitant to rezone under any circumstances. That's just my personal thought. What are we asked to?
Well, I guess we'd be then asked if we want to approve that he can...
Renovate.
Renovate.
Yeah. I bought the house, you know, for my family, for my kids, and when I bought it, I didn't know there was, you know, nobody told me about it, and I just paid the money, and, you know, I'm on the street, so what I'm trying to do is just have a home for my kids, that's all.
During the questioning process, the realtor did show up to zoning board hearing, and good, bad, or different, the realtor stated that he had no knowledge that it was a B3 business area. I thought, as the board thought, that he should have been aware of it. Apparently, the attorney either stuck his head in the sand or didn't care, 'cause the attorney never brought it to his or the realtor's attention.
That's been zoned B3 for probably 15 years or 10 years, I believe.
Something like that, yeah. So, there's no guarantee he's gonna be allowed to do the dormers. What was the name again?
Alejandro.
If we allow him to do the dormers, that we're just making him, or giving him permission to do the dormers, we're, at this point, it's up to the board what they want to do.
I can hire an architect and do it right, you know? The house is totally dressed, you know?
You see the...
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is just do it right, the house to live, you know?
The building superintendent agreed with it. He understands the circumstances. He is asking the petitioner, Mr. Prada, that, in fact, he get a structural engineer there to make sure, and present, present that information to the building department superintendent to make sure that everything's okay. Don't just go ahead with something.
No, no.
In the unknown.
I'm a construction person, you know? I work in construction, so I know all this about that, you know? I'm gonna do it right, you know? I just wanna make it, I spent all my money, and, you know, and I wanna make a house.
For it to be to grant special use. The petitioner to...
Bail?
Wants to use it for, as a residential property, because he's making changes to it. His grandfather did, because when it was built, it was probably zoned residential. Changed the zoning. That doesn't mean that people can't continue to use the property, but when you're gonna make a major structural change to it, like makes, apparently asking to do, it's like you're trying to build a house in a new zone area, and you can't do that. So, he's asking for a special use to use the property as a residential piece of property as opposed to a business.
Yeah.
So, then I need to make a motion to allow a special use.
For 14827 Cicero.
Does he have to petition for a special use? We do that on our own, our petition process. We have to present that to the, the league, huh?
Isn't that what you guys did?
Res zoning?
Yeah. We go through the zoning board.
To rezone it. Well, they did go through it, they denied the rezoning, and he put in a special use, so you could, you could approve the special use. Unless the board decides to rezone it, which I don't know that we want to do that. I think it's board's intention with the villages to, to create an entirely commercial business area along that, let's just roll it up in the board.
So, I would be looking for a special use per net for 14827 Cicero to be used as a residential for zoning commercial.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Killiley?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With nothing further before the board this evening, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.